Good morning. It's good to see you all. Thank you for coming to our first welcome work at the fourth. We will be spending eight weeks exploring all kinds of different scriptures and ideas as we prepare to become a reconciling in Christ congregation. And it is really a big honor for me to be able to have Dr. The Reverend Dr. Lisa Davison with us. Once again, she is now not only a professor of
Hebrew Bible.
Right. I was gonna say the Johnny Kajow.
Oh, Johnny Ergo Kajow.
Yeah, it's a really long title, but now she is the dean of students.
No, I'm the interim Vice President of Academic Affairs and Dean, Academic Dean.
That's right. So now I call her Dean Davison.
Yeah.
So she, someone said, she's gonna know that she's your favorite now that you said it. And I was like, surely no, she's my favorite. And I'm really glad to have you here again, Dr. Davison. Your classes always, you know, I took everything that she offered except for one. I never got to take Women of the Hebrew Bible.
Next spring.
There's still time. I'm gonna audit someday. So anyway, thank you for being here.
Sure.
And I'm sorry I have you on a short lease, but if you're on Zoom, you should be able to hear everything because Dr. Davison has her own little queen's microphone.
Yes.
There we go.
Okay. Good morning. Thank you, Cara, for the invitation and the introduction. Cara is one of those students that you claim proudly when someone comes. And I have done a similar presentation, a little longer one here before. So you may have heard me do that this morning. Cara gave me a little easier assignment. I'm gonna just do some introductory stuff about approaching scripture. And it's my understanding that next week Cara's gonna do the Hebrew Bible text, which is so exciting, like the student is becoming the teacher. Wonderful. So I'm gonna move pretty fast today, just because I think we were trying to get out by 10 or five till. And if you have questions, I will move fast and get through everything and then we'll have questions and answer time or some hopefully answer time. So the first thing I ask students or people when I'm working with them in congregations is this question. What is, oh, no, I forgot. I had a couple of interpretation. Okay. What is the Bible? Now, this can be a popcorn. If you wanna just pop some things out, when you hear the word Bible, what do you think of? Word of God. Collection of books. All written by men? Well, we, there's a possibility. I sometimes went to dream that Ruth was written by a woman and then a man edited it in the end. All those are common answers. I often get that. I have an interesting way, I think, of approaching this question. And the first is I start with what the Bible is not. And that, I think, is important for our public conversations, because a lot of people come with ideas that the Bible is this or that. And I think their approach to the Bible is asking too much of the Bible, in my opinion. So the first off is the Bible is not a history book in the traditional understanding of history being objective and purely based on facts. When we go to the library, we want history, we go to the nonfiction section. So it is a story about a particular people's journey with the Holy, but they weren't trying to write a history book for people in 2,000 years later. And also, I like to point out to folks that even history is not objective. The person who writes the history has to choose what events to include and how to interpret those events. So I grew up in Virginia, south of the Mason Dixon line, not something I'm proud of, but it was where I was born. If I read two books about the Civil War, one written by a northern art author and one written by a southern author, I would think I was reading about two different wars. So just remember, not even history is purely objective, and the Bible is not trying to be objective at all. The other thing that people want the Bible to be is a science book or a science tech text. In the technical sense of the term, as it, you know, tries to explore and explain how life came to be through hypothesis, experiment, results, and reproducibility. No, that's not what the Bible's about. It was not trying to provide science, though some people think that it has scientific information. For instance, if you want to treat the Bible as a science textbook, then I ask, do you want your doctor to practice medicine based on what they knew 2,000 years ago? No. Think of all the things that have changed in just the last hundred years. Some of the texts of the Hebrew Bible probably date to the ninth century or 10th century BCE. So we are talking about millennia of knowledge. And so what, when we turn to the Hebrew, or the Bible and ask, what does, you know, what does it say about stem cell research? I can guarantee you it says nothing, because it doesn't know what a cell is at that point in time. So again, I think we ask too much of the Bible if we expect it to be objective and a science textbook. And some people wanna treat it like a magic eight ball. You know, if you look at it and shake it up, it'll give you an answer to every question you have. Some of you may be too young to remember a magic eight ball, but some of us do. And, you know, it can give you some answers, but it's not magical in the sense that you, you know, turn to a page and just see the answer to what you're looking for. It has answers within it about deep, important human questions. Why are we here? What are we supposed to be doing while we're here? It answers some questions like that, but the thing you notice is that it often has several different answers. So when we talk about what the Bible is, I think of it as someone said, a library, a collection of books and stories that span time periods, cultures, geographies, and genres that has been handed down throughout the generations to us today. It also is important to remember that the Bible is ordered in a particular way. And the canon is what we call the scriptures that we hold as authoritative in a particular religious community. And there are different canons, if you're not aware. The Protestant canon is different from the Roman Catholic canon. And it's different from the Jewish canon, not just because it only includes those first 37 books, but actually, the Jewish canon is arranged differently as well and counts books differently. So it's 24 books instead of the number we're expecting. I also think that the Bible is a theology book. It's talking about God and God encounters with creation, not just humanity, but all of creation. But it's not a systematic theology book. You cannot answer one question and find that answer the same throughout those different books. Mainly because it is a collection, a library of books that different people in different places in time are trying to answer some of those questions. So if I wanna know who is God, I can find a multitude of answers in the entire Christian canon. So it wasn't built to just, okay, here is God, here is Jesus, here we are, all those things that we want it to be systematic. It's not gonna answer those questions for us. Now, one book might do it, but when you read across the canon, you get different answers. In some ways, the Bible is, and this often gets me carted out as a heretic, is propaganda. When you think about propaganda as literature that's trying to convince someone else of a particular way of seeing the world, well, that's what the Bible is doing. It is trying to convince people to see the world in a particular way so that they can act in ways that are appropriate, that are just. But there are multiple ideologies, again, at work in the text. So we can't just say there's one ideological claim. I do sometimes say that I believe that the meta-narrative or the big narrative of the whole Hebrew Bible is that the Holy is constantly seeking out relationships with creation, with human beings, and is trying to move us to this ideal of a world in which everyone is able to become who God created them to be. And all part of creation is treated with dignity, both the inanimate and the animate. But there's a lot in between under that big umbrella of what I see as God seeking covenant with us. It is like a map or a travel journal that our faith ancestors left for us. I think that helps us understand that we are not the first people to ask big questions. We're not the first ones to wonder, why am I here? What am I supposed to do? It tells us that others have struggled like we are struggling. And perhaps, I think, the travel journal is so that we can learn from their mistakes and not repeat them again, as well as learn from their triumphs and try and do what we can to be that kind of justice-seeking people in our 21st century world. And I think the Bible can be treated as a mirror. Hold it up and see your place in the story. Now, we like to see ourselves in the story with the team that's on God's side or Jesus' side. That may not always be a fair reading. When I teach the Exodus, I tell my students that most of us in this room are not the Hebrew slaves in the story. At best, we are the Egyptian citizens that benefit from slave labor. And at worst, we are actually the Pharaoh who keeps enforcing laws that try to oppress people out of existence. So we can be all different characters in the story, if we're honest. Now, if we talk about the Bible in these ways, a collection, stories that span across centuries and places and people, then the next question that often comes up is who wrote the Bible? And this is actually a question of authority, because authorship and authority come from the same word. And so when we ask who wrote the Bible, I'm sorry, I put Hebrew Bible. I forgot to take that out. This works for everybody. There are three possible answers people tend to give. There are those who say God wrote the Bible. Now, some of these folks literally believe it fell from heaven in the King James Version. My dear mother might have been one of those when she was around. Other people say, what is a kind of a response earlier, it's a human authored document, a male authored document. Though, as I said, I hold out hope that there were some women on the editorial team. And the third possible answer, which sounds like riding the fence, but it's where I stand, is that the Bible was written by a combination of humans and divine inspiration. I think of it as a dance, and the Holy and humans are in this dance. And sometimes the human leads and we get things like, love your neighbor as yourself and love the stranger because you were a stranger in a strange land. Other times, the human element leads, and we get some texts like go and kill all the Canaanites. Or, you know, you'll be thrown into a lake of fire for all eternity when they'll be wailing and gnashing of teeth. Both Testaments have those kinds of things and that. So if we believe that it is God who wrote the Bible, as I said, there are some. They think that either God wrote it, dictated it, or even held the pen, which was probably a stylus in the ancient world. Contradictions we might find in the Bible, like how many animals went into the ark? We say two of every kind, but it depends on where you read, because sometimes it's seven pairs of the clean animals and one pair of unclean animals. So if we see contradictions, it's due to our human fallibilities. And they tend to talk about inerrancy, that there is no error in the text, or at least infallibility, that on the big issues, it is telling you what you need to know, and there are no problems in that text. I sometimes wonder how they do this. When I read the Bible, it's hard for me to say there are no contradictions or errors. They often tend to say, I don't read, I don't interpret the Bible, I just read it. But you can't read unless you interpret. I'm not lying. I've heard all of these comments. If you think humans wrote it, then it's a purely human endeavor without any divine element. And guess what? Many people that are in the public square when we're talking Bible don't think of the Bible as something they need to pay attention to. There was a guy, Tommy Thompson, a scholar, who argued that the Hebrew Bible was a product of the Persian government. That after the exile, the Persians said, if we want to, you know, govern these people and they'll stay in line, we give them a common story. So they created the Torah and the rest of it. Now, we think that's crazy, but I was taught that my ancestors came over on the Nino Pentan Santa Maria, and they probably didn't. And I was taught that George Washington couldn't tell a lie. So we have this common story that even we have been taught to accept. Now, thankfully, we question it at every turn. And as I said, it was created to give a disparate group of people living in what we know today as Palestine, Israel, a common story. Then come the both. This recognizes that all the words, oral and then later written, were authored by humans. Therefore, subject to all human errors and limitations, like writing mistakes, tunnel vision, bias, prejudice, ego, et cetera. Often, divine inspiration lies behind these words, but not behind all of them. Sometimes, as I said, the human element overshadows what the divine might be trying to say. So if you think God wrote the Bible and you accept that, you're tending to give the Bible a lot of authority in your life, right? It has power over how you make decisions. But what we have to stop and think is that no text has automatic authority. Authority must be granted to it. So as I said, our neighbors who aren't Jewish or Christian or Muslim may think the Bible has no authority in their lives and doesn't belong in the public square. I might want to be there sometimes. Authority must be granted. Thus, the Bible doesn't have authority for everyone outside of biblically connected faith traditions. And even within these traditions, let's just use the big term Christians, we have different ways that we grant authority to the text. Most of us, I do not believe, give it complete authority. That means you don't make a decision without consulting the Bible. Usually, we have a mix of things we use in making decisions. We have the Bible, we have tradition, we have experience, and we have knowledge, logic. And we use all those to interpret the Bible. And you might even give more authority to parts of the Bible than you do other parts. I often find that Christians are more often to quote Paul than Jesus, especially in difficult topics like you're talking about now. And I'm just like, really? You give Paul more authority than the Gospels? And don't even get me started on what they want to do with the Hebrew Bible. That's a whole nother lecture. So when we talk about its authority, we decide what authority we're going to grant these texts in guiding our lives. Some of you may know or may be a self-proclaimed literalist. I don't believe if you're in this church, you would be proclaim a self, but have you met people who say they're literalists? Yeah, these are the ones who say they don't interpret the Bible, they just read it. But actually, there are no true literalists. And I'll give you an example that actually happened to me. I was at a prayer vigil for a group called Soul Force that works for LGBTQIA+ inclusion in religious traditions. And we were at a church in Lexington that had openly declared that two of its members were, what shall I say? Abomination of God, and they weren't going to let them, they could worship with them, but they couldn't practice. Which my friend Dottie said, well, how will we ever get good at it? But that's an... So this woman comes up to our silent prayer vigil, to my friend on my left, who identified as lesbian. And she starts just yelling at her and, you know, her floppy Bible going like this, like this. And that's when I realized I can't do a silent vigil. It just doesn't work. So I stepped in front of my friend to engage this person. And she was, and she was quoting scripture. I had to correct her one time, which was really funny, because this was a Baptist church, and they know the Bible better than disciples of Christ do. So I said, okay, let me just get this straight. You say the Bible is something you take literally. Yes, indeed. Every word I take literally. And I said, well, let me ask you. When Jesus says, go and sell everything you have and give it to the poor, doesn't look like you've done that. And she said, no, lie. He didn't mean that literally. In fact, Peter Gomes, who was the chaplain at Harvard at one time, he's now deceased, says, we're all selectivists. We all select which parts of scripture we take as authoritative or not. We decide what parts may be so bound by their authors and communities and cultural, historical, ideological biases that they no longer can apply to the 21st century. And we decide which texts we think contain some enduring legacy, information that if carefully interpreted, could offer a world to the 21st century. Now, I like to stop here and say that this literalist story, I didn't mean to make fun of her, we all have some of that. But one thing I say to my students is that not every story in the Hebrew Bible, or even the Bible itself, I would say as a whole, was recorded as a go and do likewise story. I think some of those stories were recorded that we would be so shocked at what we see in their behavior that we'd figure out where we're doing the same thing and stop. So not every story is a go and do likewise story. So how do you decide which ones are which? Well, that's this big word hermeneutics, or hermeneutic in the singular. Basically, a hermeneutic is an interpretive lens through which we read the Bible. That's lens that helps us determine what's timeless and time-bound. And so the key is to be able to name your hermeneutic. What is it that you use to determine what is timeless and what is time-bound? I think this woman that I encountered, her hermeneutic was anything that steps on my toes is not to be taken literally. Anything that steps on someone else's toes, that should be taken literally. Now, she would have never named that as her hermeneutic, but that's what I gathered. So being able to understand how you make those decisions. There's not one way. There's not one hermeneutical approach. Feminists, the scholars of the Bible came up with this term, really, of we have a hermeneutic of suspicion. That means we read the text with critical eyes, asking questions like, where are the women? Where are the people on the margins? Why didn't they get a voice in this story? If we have this in hermeneutic that is consistent, we apply it to every text the same, then we will probably help prevent the other thing that drives Dr. Davison crazy, and that is what we call proof texting. If you're not familiar with that word, proof texting is when we take a verse of scripture out of context and drop it into the conversation or the paper as if it needs no explanation, right? And we do this because it fits our own bias. It fits what we want to say. I am constantly telling my students, every verse has a broader context. So don't just drop a verse in your paper and think I'm gonna agree with you. I want you to tell me, what is the broader passage and how does context, genre, et cetera, apply to this passage? But a lot of people, and I confess, once I did it, I used to, after church, when I was serving in a congregation, as soon as I was back to my office, I took my shoes off, because I hated shoes, especially heels. And one day, somebody saw me walking around barefoot, and they're like, oh, where's your shoes? And I said, oh, I took them off because I'm standing on holy ground. So we all proof text, but that was in jest. So my hermeneutics, since I'm talking about this, I ground in the image of God that we find present in the life and teachings of Jesus as they are presented in the books of the New Testament. And I often say, I really go back to two commandments. When Jesus was asked, what is the greatest commandment, he said, yeah, love God with all you are, which comes from Deuteronomy 6:4. He didn't make it up. He picked a commandment. And the second commandment is love your neighbor as yourself, of all places. That comes from Leviticus. Imagine that. And it's not the other, it's right in between the two passages people like to quote in Leviticus when talking about issues of sexuality. Seems funny. Jesus could have chosen either one of those, but he chose, love your neighbor as yourself. And that same verse goes on to say, love the stranger. We like to stop at neighbor when we really should include the stranger as well. So when I read a text that I think helps me love God with all I am and love my neighbor as myself, like, I don't know. What shall I say? When Micah says, make justice happen, love passionately as God loves, and walk as God's image in the world, my translation, not in the Bible, I say, oh, that helps me love God and love my neighbor as myself. Now, I don't get to stop there. I have to do a really deep dive to interpret it to make certain I'm not making that text say what I want it to say. And when I come across that passage that says, go and kill all the Canaanites, doesn't help me love God or my neighbor as myself, I don't get to toss it out. I'm not Thomas Jefferson, though sometimes I'd like to make my own Bible. That doesn't happen. So I have to, again, study it intensely, because I wanna know why it's in there. Why did someone decide that belonged in their stories of faith? And as I said earlier, my guess is that was not divinely inspired, but rather was a human justification for why they, you know, could take other people's land without any consideration of what those people were going to do. So I think I have time with a few more things. When you're interpreting the Bible, another thing that you should be aware of is what translation you're using. Not all translations are equal. Some are better than others. I always tell folks, choose a translation that was done by a group that was ecumenical and interfaith. It means you want some Jewish people on there when they're translating the Hebrew Bible, and even some of those Gospels that were still Jewish texts at that time. You want to know what texts they had access to. So when the King James Version was written, they didn't know about some of the texts we know now. They didn't know about the Dead Sea Scrolls, for instance. So they consulted what they knew. Today, if someone only consults some very limited versions of the Bible, that's not a good translation. You need to have them accessing all the manuscripts we have, and they are plentiful. Hebrew, Aramaic, Greek, Latin, Syriac, all sorts of different manuscripts. And not always do they disagree, but sometimes they do. So you wanna know who did it, you wanna know what they utilized, and then you wanna know how they did it. And essentially, in translating languages from one into another, there are two basic translation philosophies that we talk about in biblical studies. The first is what we call formal correspondence. That's when I am translating from the Hebrew into English, and I try to get one word in English for one word in Hebrew. Or sometimes with Hebrew- Or sometimes with Hebrew, it takes three words, because they're shorter in how they say things on the scrolls. So, formal correspondence, it's really trying to be as close to what the Hebrew or Greek says as it can be. Some examples would be the New Revised Standard Version. Some may know about the NRSV, updated edition. They did some good there, but they didn't do all they should have done. The New International Version, and as I said, even the King James Version was a formal correspondence. That's why you get weird things. Like, there's a line in the Hebrew Bible that says, "He that pisseth against the wall." I was so excited to tell my mom about that, because she hated the word piss. And I'm like, "Well, right there in your Bible, Mom." It was an idiomatic phrase, a way of saying males. And the more formal correspondence did it literally, if you will. And the Jewish Publication Society Tanakh version is also a formal correspondence. The second philosophy is what we call dynamic equivalence. And that's why you're really, that's when you're really looking for the sense of the language. So, I'm reading in Hebrew, and I'm ready to put it into English, and there just aren't words for some of those Hebrew words. So, I try to be as close as possible, but realizing that there's some dynamic elements there that won't translate. For example, one of my favorite words, shalom. We translate it as peace. That's not what it means. It means so much more, wholeness, et cetera. So, sometimes you really have to just make some choices. That's why translation is interpretation. It's not objective. It's still interpretation. Some versions that use dynamic equivalence, today's English version, the New English Bible, the New American Bible, which is also the Jerusalem Bible, Roman Catholic translation, they did an excellent job with poetry, especially Hebrew poetry, because they weren't trying to be so wooden in their translation. So, formal correspondence, dynamic equivalence, it's fine to use both of those if you're studying a passage impact. I like to suggest you look at multiple translations that are reliable, to see what they tell you about the text. Now, there's one other thing that exists out in the world that is really the bane of my existence at times, and that is this thing called a paraphrase. A paraphrase is not a translation. Paraphrase is basically when I take a translation and try and make it easier to read at a particular reading level. But most paraphrases don't go back to the original languages and paraphrase in that way. One does that we know of, and it's fairly popular. It's called "The Message." Eugene Peterson. Now, the problem is Eugene Peterson started with the New Testament and then did the Old Testament as second thought, which is very typical of some people in Christianity. My New Testament colleagues tell me, he did a great job with New Testament in The Message. But I can tell you, for the Hebrew Bible text, it is not very reliable. There's an example in Proverbs that talks about, "A good ruler doesn't get drunk on wine." And The Message says, "A good ruler doesn't swill beer." There's not a word for beer in the entire Hebrew Bible. That's what I'm talking about. Paraphrase is not trying to translate again. It's trying to make it easier to read, and it's fine for maybe devotional study, though I don't recommend it. But when you really want to do critical study, you need either formal correspondence, dynamic equivalence, or both. I also mentioned the Living Bible. I had this growing up. The Living Bible was when a man wanted to take the Bible and make it easier for his children to understand. So, he took the translation in English and lowered it to a different reading level. That is perfectly fine. I'm all for that with younger people. But when we get to be adults, I think Paul said, "We put away childish ways." And we step up to the translations rather than the paraphrases. Let's see, one more. I think I will stop there, though I will, let me jump to this next, these next slides. I rearranged this in my... When we read the Bible, I think there are some questions we should ask. What kind of literature are we reading? That's genre. How does that influence how we read? We read poetry different than prose. We read a narrative different from a legal text. So, identify the genre of the text. What is the historical, sociological context that we think is the backdrop for this writing? Now, it's still a best guess, because we don't have any of those original texts and the author's notes. Then you ask, how does this text relate to the rest of the biblical texts? Is this kind of out of left field from what you read consistently in the Hebrew Bible and New Testament? And I like to say, read it to find out what the text actually has versus what you've been told it has. Many of us were probably told that, "In the garden, Eve gave Adam an apple." It wasn't an apple. It was fruit, and apples wouldn't have grown in that area at that time. She also didn't tempt him. It doesn't say that either. He was with her the whole time. So, you've been told something. Go find out for yourself. One of my friends, when they found out it wasn't an apple, boom. What else have I been told that was not true? Now, their pastor may not have liked me for asking that question. After reading, I like to ask, you know, what did we hear in the text? What questions do you want to ask of that text? What did it not tell you that you want to know more about? Who is speaking and telling the story? From whose perspective is it being written? And then, whose voice is unheard in this story? I give you a hint. Female voices almost always are unheard, but so are marginalized voices like slaves or folks who are outside the community. What does this text tell us about God, about humanity, about creation? Who we are? What are we supposed to be doing? How do we work with God to transform this world? And what can this text teach us today? Now, sometimes it'll be, "Go and do likewise." But as I said, other times, the text will teach us, "Oh, no, we're doing the same thing today. We need to stop and change our ways." All right. As I said, not every story was recorded as a go-and-do-likewise. If you have any questions you want to follow up with, that's my email. Is there any question? I know you've got worship at 11, right? Any quick question that somebody wants to ask? I have given Cara my PowerPoint, so you can have a copy of it. Do not hesitate to email me. I actually like to respond to people who ask questions, whether they're ministers, laity, anyone outside the congregations, because that's what I see my job as, as teacher. Anything? Yeah? Yes. The hermeneutic that you use. So, as I said, if you have a love hermeneutic, if it teaches you to love God with all you are and your neighbor and yourself, I would keep it, but still really interpret it. If it's telling me to not do that, then I interpret it even more to try and figure out why it's there. But every person makes that choice. Just make certain you can identify why this text is authoritative and this text isn't. If you eat lobster, ham, et cetera, then you've already broken several of the 613 commandments in the Torah. That means you can't pull out two that talk about men lying with men as with women and say they are still in force. Because, as you may have heard me say, that wasn't a buffet law code. That was an all-or-nothing law code. So, just, it's your own interpretive, and it's best done in community, not by yourself in a room, or even in an echo chamber. Sometimes it's good to engage people who have different ideas about the Bible. And I really don't try to make fun of people when they, you know, like I did the woman at the prayer vigil. I just had enough of her telling my friend that she was an abomination. So, you will hear about abomination and some of those texts in the Hebrew Bible next week from Cara, and I just want to thank you for being a congregation that is seeking to be inclusive, welcoming, and working for all to feel, to know that they have inherent dignity, simply for the fact that they are created in the divine image, no matter any of the labels we want to put on them. So, thank you very much.